Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. For our first briefing today will be the last briefing last week that we had to miss because of time constraints. I'd like to introduce our Director of Finance, Alice Kelly, and she's going to make a presentation on our Small Women and Minority Businesses Program update.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Good afternoon. This took me a whole week to get here, so hopefully this has worked the wait. So Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Woods, council members, Taylor, Adam, and I from the Economic Development are pleased to come and talk to you about our Small Women and Minority-Owned Business Programs. And as the Finance Director, I'm used to giving a lot of numbers, and hopefully I won't be giving you any numbers today, but we're talking about programs that we've been doing. About a year ago, City Council was briefed on the disparity study results, and the Department of Finance and Economic Development have been working very closely together to improve and work on our SWAM business processes, as well as to implement the disparity study While Taylor and I are going to be talking, these initiatives really take a village. And I like that phrase in this because there's so many people that have to have say in this. We have, obviously, the City Council members, we have the Minority Business Board members, city staff, all over the city. I was at the aquarium today and mentioned that I was going to be giving this, oh yeah, this is what I do. So it is all over the city that helps make our SWAM efforts work. On this slide, we have four members of our team. Jeff Smith is a Business Development Manager in Economics Development, and he works in economic developments, helping people do business in the city. And then in our Finance Department, we have Livia Tolentino, which is right here to my right, and she's one of our Minority Business Coordinators. We have Keith Lee, who is not unable to come today, but he's also a Minority Business Coordinator. And Nikita Susins is our newest NBC Assistant. We had been, had a position vacant for a little bit. And of course, leading the group is Rebecca Key, our Purchasing Agent. And as the relatively new Finance Director in the City of Virginia Beach, I just was amazed at the biggest and large program that we have for SWAM. And I really do think that the City of Virginia Beach is in the right place with the SWAM program, and we have a lot of things going on. And so for people that may or may not know, or for implementation updates, I'm going to go through just some of our programs in purchasing. Taylor's going to talk about some of the ones in economic development. So it's very multifaceted. So each block represents a particular function. So the first one I'd like to talk about is our Minority Business Council. I think we have an excellent Minority Business Council. City Council appoints people that are so dedicated, and it's one of my favorite meetings to attend each month. Our city staff helps coordinate the monthly meetings, as well as the workshops, and the annual spring and the fall conference. The 21st Fall Conference is scheduled for November 7th at the Convention Center, and we've already seen that we're going to have record-breaking attendance at that event. Just last week, I received a personal invitation on Facebook from Councilman Rouse to attend that meeting. And so I think it's really wonderful that council members really support that committee. Also, as initiated through that committee, councilperson Wooton, Rouse, and former Councilwoman Kane worked on an ordinance that council approved about the aspirational goal for minority businesses, improving that from 10% to 12%. I don't know, we have an administrative directive of 6.09, I'm not sure if all council members know that, which is the requirements for how to do small business in the city. And it requires every single purchase that is under $5,000 to solicit at least one SWAM and one woman-owned business to be able to have a solicitation for that purpose. The city has numerous other procurement initiatives, including a bond waiver program that was adopted by City Council in 2011. In FY 2018, we had 18 vendors use this program, and in FY 19-3 so far, we're one of the few cities that actually use that legislation and take advantage of that legislation. And it really does help small businesses that may or may not qualify for a large contract. One of the things that I was very pleased and surprised about, though, is we have many MOUs with state agencies, and in our purchasing office, we have a state officer, Angela Barber, who, that's her only office, is here in purchasing in Virginia Beach. And she works with the state, but she helps businesses get certified through their SWAM certification. She also educates them on opportunities for state and local-level opportunities for business. We have a Small Business Enhancement Program adopted by council in 2011 that certifies small businesses and subcontractors. And so for large contractors, the prime has to turn in a subcontracting plan, and Livia and Keith review those programs and make sure that a good SBSD plan was submitted. And so if it's not submitted, they might get turned away from doing business with the city. Training, the city does numerous training programs, and we have at least quarterly formal training for all new employees or anybody doing purchasing. The next one is November 1st. And one of the big things and topics we cover are the SWAM initiatives that we're trying to accomplish. We have many outreach and advocacy programs, such as the Small Business Institute, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then one of the things that Livia and Keith work very diligently on is the Procurement Opportunity Committee. And what that is, is that they bring businesses in, small businesses, minority-owned businesses, to discuss qualifications and proactively help them try to create solicitations and be able to do business with the city. And so in July, August, September, October, we've met with at least one vendor each month. But in FY 18, we hosted 17 of these meetings. Seven companies were able to get contracts with the city totaling over $1.6 million. So it's a very successful program, and it helps businesses that may or may not have been able to do business with the city before. And so I'm going to turn it over to Taylor, and he's going to talk a little bit about economic development initiatives.
Thank you, Alice. Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor, council, and then Mr. Leahy and Mr. Stiles. So nice to be with all of you this afternoon. And just want to echo what Alice said, and thank you all for your leadership on this issue, not just in the region, but really within the Commonwealth. A lot of the programs that Alice just went through exist only here. And so appreciate your willingness to support the policy initiatives that we've brought to you over the last five years, and really going back to 1994 with the establishment of the Small Business Enhancement Plan, to get, basically, to make sure that we're doing our part to be involved in this community. Economic development really works through four, works in this space through four primary sort of categories. One, financial incentives, the EDIP, that's the Economic Development Investment Program. You all will remember, we brought you an update to that policy just a few months ago, and we thank you for that. The Vibe Creative Districts, so as you all know, those were matching grants that we provided, really in sort of the central beach area. And in your last budget, you all will remember that you've expanded that to what we're now calling the District Improvement Plan, to give us the ability to go a bit further with that program and expand it beyond the Vibe into other parts of the city where we have the opportunity to create the same effect. Industrial Revenue Bonds are one of the chartering opportunities that we see, basically, going back to 1964 when you all established the authority. Important to know there, just two, three weeks ago, you all approved the issuance of $22 million worth of industrial revenue bonds to support affordable housing in our community. And so again, we mention these because these are all initiatives that are alive and well in our community today that you are supporting. Mentorship Program is something that's really on the staff side. That's where we are working with local businesses and universities in the region, but as well as, not just local businesses, but also anyone that can provide program for our startup ecosystem. We understand that an economic development agency in 2019 has got to be investing in both the top and bottom of the development community. And at the bottom, we often find people with a lot of great ideas that want to be business owners, that want to create wealth in our community, they don't necessarily know how to get there. These mentorship programs are the way that we facilitate that activity, and the way that we are able to dedicate staff time and our own resources to ensure that we understand those needs. The Entrepreneur in Residence Program really flowed out of one of our mentorship activities. That's something that we've done with 1701 Coworking Space in the Vibe District, and through your support, we were able to take eight startup businesses. So two a quarter for all of the last year, two businesses per quarter with your support were part of our Entrepreneur in Residence Program at 1701, where they received all of the benefits that we talk about in our mentorship program, but also had sort of hands-on attention from people that are experts in cultivating small business growth. And then our Business Development Programs, the Economic Development Workshop Series is something that Jeff Smith on my team has led, as well as Livia Tolentino on the purchasing staff. The workshop series is very important to us because that's the place where we see the two sides of the conversation dovetail together. In the purchasing department, we often talk about doing business with the city. My department in Economic Development, we focus on doing business in the city. So this workshop series is where those looking to grow and do business in our city, and those that are looking to do business with our city, have an opportunity to come together and share in the same program and create collaboration. We have the SWAM Business Forum, annual event that has generated great success, and then also our Small Business Workshop Series, which is really a deep dive on the Economic Development Workshop Series. Be remiss if I did not mention our involvement with Carolina Virginia Minority Supplier Development Council, which named us their Public Agency of the Year just a few weeks ago. You all will remember, we showed you that award here. So thank you for your support, and thank you for your ongoing support in this area. And I'm going to turn it back over to Alice.
And on this slide, we have the picture of the award with some of our staff in purchasing. I think Jeff Smith was the one that applied for that in Economic Development. We work very closely together. Also, we wanted to talk about project information sessions. As we have city large projects, we have businesses come together and provide information prior to the solicitation. We provide opportunities for primes to meet subcontractors and vice versa. We also have the Small Business Institute, which I talked about a little bit earlier. And basically, this institute was reinstituted about a year ago, and so we're on our second session of that. And this is basically a detailed workshop on how to develop and grow a small business. And so it's a very intensive workshop that one of our Minority Business Council members teaches, Ron Lewis, and we've had 30 businesses go through it over the course of two sessions, so 60 businesses. We really had to turn people away for that. And so then Taylor also talked about the Public Corporation of the Year Award. That was a really prestigious award to achieve. The next slide, we wanted to talk a little bit about the disparity study and some of the recommendations. Right here is a picture of the Minority Business Council being sworn into their roles. But the disparity study was completed in 2018, and we've been working collaboratively to work on the implementation of those recommendations. And so what we'd like to do is briefly go over some of the recommendations. Some of the things we're doing already, and have been doing for a while, but we're re-energizing and redoing them. And one of the things that, you know, we're going to say, continue, continue, but, you know, this is not a, we're going to meet the end. This is a continuous thing, and you just improve and make more and more education and more and more strides in trying to reach your goals. So the first one was the aspirational goal, and as we mentioned, City Council approved that from 10% to 12%. We've changed all our contracts and our templates, so we make sure that everybody knows that's the aspirational goal, and we're putting that in our training with all our employees. One of the other recommendations is SWAM Office. And so right now, the Purchasing Division has a three-person office that works independently. They don't do any buying. They only work on SWAM programs and supporting the Minority Business Council. They also advocate for SWAM businesses. And right now, we're conducting biweekly meetings to address all the recommendations of the disparity study, as well as working on ERP and the Minority Business Council requests. Data collection, so the study recommending improving data collection, and man, we're all for that. Our ERP system is being installed this year. We're going to Oracle Fusion Cloud, and we've been working very diligently to approve access for vendors to obtain solicitation. And we're going live July 1st. So a couple of the things that the ERP is going to be capable of is that, right now, we don't use commodity codes in our system, and we're going to have commodity codes, and vendors are going to be able to sign up and say, I want bids for all of these type of commodity codes, office supplies, or janitorial supplies, or landscaping services. And so anytime anybody in any department wants to purchase something, they'll be able to say, okay, this is the commodity, and this is the requisition, and it's going to go out to every vendor that signed up for it. And it's going to be instantaneously, and it's going to be the vendor provided us his email or her email address. And right now, we're relying on a manual process. We're reviewing those processes, but it's going to be so much nicer to have it automated. We're going to be able to have better communication with vendors and ability to track our invoices that are submitted. Right now, everything comes through paper to departments, and if it's put on somebody's desk that's out, we don't know where it is. And so this is going to be so much easier when people can scan in invoices and put invoices in a system that's going to be matched to purchase orders. We're going to also be able to do better and improved ACH payments, and we're going to have a much better tracking capability to see subcontracting information, as well as just the SWAM businesses. The next slide is growth monitoring. The study identified the need to collect data on the impact of SWAM programs, and we agree with that, too. Our ERP system is going to help us do that. But right now, we have 625 state-certified SWAM businesses in the City of Virginia Beach, and we obviously know there's a lot more that maybe are not certified, or that they're in other cities that we want them to come do business with City of Virginia Beach. So we are working on tracking that. We have business certification, that we have a self-certification process. And part of the ERP system is we want to see how the best way to do that self-certification process is to work through the system. We obviously have the SWAM program through the Commonwealth of Virginia. We are using that process. But do we want self-certification in our system so people that may not have the wherewithal to do that SWAM certification might be able to self-certify their own businesses? So we're working on that through the ERP system. We also have subcontracting opportunities. The study identified need for access to opportunities for small and diverse business. And so one of the large tasks that Keith and Livia do, they monitor the solicitations that purchasing does, and they call businesses, and they email businesses, and try to get them to solicit and do more bidding with the city. Obviously, our new ERP system is going to make that a little bit easier if we can get vendors to sign up, and we could just email things a lot quicker. Contracting goals, so the disparity study asked for contracting goals, individual contract goals, and the Minority Business Council and Councilman Rouse, actually, have worked with developing a shelter bidding ordinance. And so we need to work through that and see what the best way is to achieve our goals with those kind of ordinances. We also have the bond waiver program that works really nicely for certain businesses to be able to get that bond waiver waived, the bond requirements waived, so they can do a larger project than they might not normally be able to afford. And so this year, we've had three of those projects waived, and last year, I think it was 18. Then unbundling of large contracts, so we've been really working on this for many years, and this is an ongoing and a pretty significant administrative effort that we're willing to do. We have many contracts that are unbundled, landscaping, we have 60 different contracts for landscaping. So when I came here from a different city, I was surprised. I'm like, why don't we have one or two vendors? And so it was explained to me, this is a really unique and best practice to be able to open up our bidding for a lot of smaller firms, and it made sense. So we have landscaping, janitorial, IT staffing, which I didn't think that would have been one, but that really does help get a lot more business that you wouldn't normally see. Towing, tree works, demolition, we have a lot more like that. And then finally, the last recommendation was the prompt payment, which we really believe that we want to do this as efficiently as possible. We have ACH payments. We got our ACH vendor to do a really big campaign to be able to get and reach out to different vendors to see if we can get them to sign up for ACH. And so with our new ERP system, vendors will be able to do that electronically, and so it'll help improve some of our ACH. And one of the things that, you know, we have a lot of decisions with this new ERP system, and one of the things we want to do is, we want to make things suggested, not required, because we really also want to open up ourselves to be able to do business with every kind of business, not just ones that are electronically savvy. And so what's next? Well, obviously, our new ERP system is supposed to go live in July, so our vendor portal will open in June. We have the NBC Conference and Expo November 7th. And so at the conference, we're going to be starting soliciting vendors to make sure that when we have the portal up and live, we have the vendor's information to put in, and then we could get them to fill out more. We have our diversity, or just, I'm sorry, our disparity study report, our annual report by the BBC Research is going to be coming to us in the next month or so, so probably report back to council. That one will be a lot of numbers. That's not going to be like this one, which is just a lot of words, but that should be available December or January. And then we continue to work on implementing the disparity study recommendations. Be happy to take any questions?
Questions or comments, anybody? Jim?
So can you explain what the sheltered bidding process is?
Sheltered bidding, and I think Councilman Rouse had sent out an ordinance, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm going to explain it the way I understand it, but I think I would defer to the legal team. But shelter bidding basically is saying that, under a certain dollar amount, you would require, if they're available, certain types of vendors to bid on those particular items.
So is it a set aside?
It's similar to a set aside, yes.
So only identified vendors could bid on it?
If there's enough there available to bid on that particular type of...
Thanking the ordinance, we, and I gave the council a look at, so we can all chip in and see how we can strengthen it. And correct me if I'm wrong, the ordinance, it was, the sheltered bidding will seek out three SWAM businesses. If you only got two, then it will start the whole process over, if I'm correct. And I think the limit was, was it $500,000?
$500 for construction, $100,000 for non-construction.
Okay.
Just a question. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jess?
I had a question. For the commodity codes, is the way those vendors are selected based strictly on price? Or is there...
It depends on what type of bid we do. If it's a bid, yes, as long as they're...
Talking about your program to basically send out an email saying, we need this supply. Is that just going to be...
Well, commodity codes are done by the National Institute of Government Procurement, and so they're selected, I think it's a five-digit code, and there's all different types of commodities. You could select every commodity if you want to, and get every bid that the city sends out. But typically, you're not going to want every single one. And so then we would solicit and say, you can bid on this. And then it's a due date, and you tell us what you have, what the price is, if it's a bid.
But so if it's a bid, it's strictly based on price?
Right. As long as you can meet the qualifications and can do the work. I mean, there has to be a, you know, the ability to do that, and you're not disbarred somewhere else or something.
Okay, anybody else? Guy?
I just had one question for Taylor, if I could.
Sure.
Off-topic, but while we have you, I just saw the governor announced a new Opportunity Virginia Fund with regard to opportunity zones. Are you familiar with that? I hate to put you on the spot, but I just...
That's okay. Glad to do it. No, we're certainly familiar that the governor's established the fund. What we've not done is a deep dive into specifically what's happening in the fund, and what the intended uses of his fund are specifically. Now that that's been announced, we'll dive into it over the next couple of weeks. Important to note, we do have two established opportunity zone funds that are operating here in Virginia Beach now, and one just recently opened. We're meeting with that gentleman in the next couple of weeks. The other thing that we would note is, we most recent, the concept of opportunity zones is something that we, as a team, are still trying to wrap our hands around. And by that, and so most recently, Ron Williams and I were both at the Urban Land Institute Conference in DC about three weeks ago, where this sort of featured, and we both sort of did a deep dive on how this might work and what the real potential benefit for communities are. So we're still getting our hands around it.
Good. Well, I hope you'll continue to do that. I'm not convinced that it's a great opportunity to use it yet, but I sure think we ought to explore it.
And so I'll tell you, we agree, and we don't know specifically what the long-term impact here is, will be here. What we do know is there's, in the instance where we have a single developer establishing a fund to develop a single piece of property, it's fairly straightforward, and the benefits are there known, and we think that that can work. The bigger issue for us is out of the final, sort of adopted regs, there was the opportunity to take a tenant interest in a zone without necessarily owning real estate in it, and we don't really know how to get our hands around that yet.
Okay, Michael?
I have a question about the disparity study and related follow-up. The disparity study revealed that, in fact, a disparity in contracting did exist. And so you mentioned that there would be a follow-up, and that we'll be receiving some information shortly with numbers.
Sure.
That would reveal where we were when the disparity study existed, and where we are today. Is that correct? And I want to...
It'll be fiscal year '19's result, and then a five-year average or a four-year average.
Compared to last, so it would be...
Yeah, right.
One year compared to one year. And so I'll be very interested in seeing those results. But I wonder if, I think it's, many residents that I've spoken to and stakeholders in the community have expressed that they're interested in accountability as it relates to the disparity studies. So the disparity was revealed, there are measures that are being implemented to address that disparity, and how are we going to keep, hold ourselves accountable, not only with an aspirational goal, but with demonstrated results? So I guess my question is, does the disparity study that was contracted include what you would consider to be adequate follow-up measures to continue to measure and hold ourselves accountable to our aspirational goals? Or would another study or examination be appropriate? I'm just wondering how the study was structured in the beginning, in terms of follow-up.
You might be able to, I have some thoughts on this.
This one flows back to a previous job of mine.
Sure, sure.
So if you'll let me, I'll jump in on that one. So councilmember, I think the answer to that in the short term, based on the limited data that we have today, and by that, I mean, we're effectively one year out from the end of the study. I think the answer in the short term is yes, because the first step was, one, understanding the data that was in our initial study, and then setting up a framework by which we could do the ongoing monitoring to see how our performance was progressing and how we were performing over time. And so that happened, and that's where you noticed in Alice's presentation, that BBC Research and Consulting, that did the study, that provided all of the sort of the scientifically defensible, and most importantly, legally defensible work that supported the study, is checking up on us year over year. So that's the first thing. So we'll be back, so this team will be back to this body once a year going forward to talk about how we performed against what was identified as our weaknesses in that initial study. As it relates to future studies, I don't know that it would be appropriate for us to opine on that, because that's very much a legislative decision that would have to come to this body after a certain amount of time. It's not uncommon for cities to do a second study after five years, to see what, to see, basically, we looked at five years, what's the next five years look like, but that doesn't always happen. I don't know that it would be appropriate to say it's common at this point, because it's very much a legislative decision. It has to be made by this body. But we do, but it is important to note, when we finished the study, one of the first things we did was set up an ongoing contract with the provider for the maintenance and the ongoing support, so that we know what the performance looks like. And we made a commitment to come back to this body and report those findings year over year.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Okay, Sabrina Denarren.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for your report. Certainly, I really appreciate what you said about being a collaborative effort, and that's so true. It takes everyone, staff, city council, officials, working together to address the disparity in our city. And, you know, it's also good, you know, to have been able to work with Livia, and Rebecca, and Keith, when I was a former Outreach Chair and former Vice Chair of the Minority Business Council. So I'm well aware of the journey to this point. There've been a lot of effort, people who have come before me, who've worked to see the disparity study come to for which... the disparity study come to fruition, and to see the results, and also see how we will address it.
Sure.
And so I'm glad that we are at this point, but we have more work to do. If I haven't seen anything else, I know that there's more work to do, and as you mentioned, it is a continuous effort.
It's, yes, there's not, there's not a stop.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm glad to hear that. My question focuses on the 627 SWAM certified businesses within the city of Virginia Beach. Do you know how many of those businesses actually have, or currently have, contracts with the city?
That's a good question. And as I said, a lot of what we're doing right now is manual, because we have a very old ERP system. So I'm not sure if we can get that information, but do you have that, Laverre?
I do not have that.
But we can, we can try to find that, though. I think that is a key factor. I think one of the things we've really been concentrating on is making sure we get a good ERP system, because we're going to be able to pull out so much more data and communicate so much easier to vendors, but I like that.
And so I'm back.
Sure.
Sorry. And one other thing that's important to mention here is, your Small Business Enhancement Plan and the programs this body has established does allow them a means of self-certification. And so it's important to note that, that the, that the process where Alice mentioned earlier Angie Barber's office within the purchasing office, that was a huge step forward for us, because it, it puts small business and supplier diversity, and our purchasing team, in the same place every day. But, but also, it's important to note that the, that the threshold of achieving SWAM certification in the Commonwealth is not necessarily an easy process, and it shouldn't be, because it's got to be accurate. And so, just one thing to note, one of the reasons that we would struggle to isolate that data is because our system allows for self-certification, so that we know who's out there, so that we can help particularly the smallest firms in our community work through the process and help them achieve that SWAM designation.
And I, I think that's important, because one of the concerns that I do hear is, businesses become certified, and that's a great feather to have in your cap, but they may not receive the benefit to that certification, and that's what they want, because that's why they obtain the certification.
That's right. You know, and it's funny, that's the reason that the purchasing team established the Procurement Opportunity Committee. I think about Horizon Construction, who bid on five city contracts before they got their first one. The gateway for them was, was the certification, but then you've still got to come and compete for the contract. And so, once, because we had identified the contract, we were able to work with them day over day, and solicitation over solicitation, until they were able to be successful. And so, thank you, Councilmember.
Sure, sure. And I would like to see those numbers whenever you get a chance. The other question I have is, pertains to unbundling contracts, and I know this is something that you say you've worked on, or everyone, staff has worked on in the past. What seems to be the challenge to actually, I guess, seeing the results that you want to see in that process?
Well, I think we are doing a lot of it, and think we can do more. It is challenging, because, you know, administering one contract is so much less than 25 or 60. And so you really have to pick the contracts, and then you have to work with the departments to be able to do that. So it's an educational thing. So we are working on that, so, but it is a challenge to try to do that more and more. And so I think we've made a lot of progress through that. I think working with Public Works and Public Utilities with construction, we're going to have to start doing that a little bit more.
My last question is, just curious, it's my understanding that we've never really had a definition for a small business in our city. Do you think that would make a difference in terms of...
Okay, I'm going to let that...
Contracting with our city.
So we, so important to note, we have had a definition of small business now, and we have tracked exactly with the Commonwealth definition of small business every step of the way. A challenge for us has been, there was a micro-small business designation that was created by executive order from the governor. The General Assembly did not extend that ability to municipalities, so we are basically forced to track with the, with the Commonwealth definition of small business. And, and in the, I could have to look to the attorneys on this, but in the Dillon Rule, there's, in the Dillon Rule state, there's no opportunity for us not to track with their definition at this point.
Okay, so you say that you, we do have a definition?
Yes, ma'am. It's the Commonwealth's definition. It's, it's as it's defined by the Commonwealth, and it fits within, within your Small Business Enhancement Plan, and with all, within all of your administrative directives on this point, as well as in our purchase orders and contracting documents.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron?
I just wanted to thank you for the presentation as well, and take my hat off to Taylor and Laverre, and the entire staff, for the work that you all are doing. I know firsthand, because I've been at quite a few of your events, with helping not only SWAM businesses, but businesses in general for our city, and putting that national spotlight on our, on our city, as a place that you can do business in. So I'm really excited about that. I guess my, more, it's more rather of a comment than a question, with the disparity study, and the things that we have, what we have learned from, and I think for me, being the liaison for the NBC as well, I think, you know, we're so excited to get going and try to implement all the things that we have learned from disparity study, but it's really important that we take our time and get it right, because it's really complex, making sure that things that we implement, whether it's ordinance sense or resolution, that they are accurate, and that the sources, the things that we have learned are going towards growing our city the right way. So when it comes to the disparity study, it's only been a year, and already, we jumped our, disparity study has, was done within a year, and what we've learned so far, that we've already jumped the, the aspirational goal to 12%, which was really a huge step going forward as well. But I'd just like for us to continuously, as a group, take our time and really understand what we learned from the disparity study, so we can implement the right legislation to go forth, so we can improve businesses in general, not just SWAM businesses, but business in general in, in our city.
Okay, Guy?
Just had one more question about the unbundling issue from the recital that you did of the types of businesses. There were obviously a lot of issues where you had a lot of manual labor involved in that type of, the IT, I heard you mention. Is the issue in terms of getting a more diverse, across-the-board kind of representation? Is it more on demand or supply side? Is it that we just don't have the kind of contracts that lend themselves to it, or we don't have the kind of companies in the, that qualify bidding for those?
And so, so... So first, I feel like I should sort of apologize to Alice, because I keep jumping up here. But the reality is, is, as most of you know, I was sort of married to this work for, for the first three years that I was here, and so I have, and now get to work with the same small businesses every day on the other side of just sort of creating work.
Yeah, it's great.
And so, so, yes, so still very much closely connected to this work. And so, so what I would offer is, it's a combination of both. I mean, so, construction offers, construction, we felt, offered the first real opportunity. And it's important to note, the contracts that we did with Laverre's leadership, and specifically, when we were, when we were able to unbundle construction contracts and break them down to sort of smaller, general contracting numbers, spread across all of the disciplines within, within sort of general construction. We were able to create a one and a half million dollars' worth of new women and minority-owned business activities. So that effort absolutely works when we do it. If you add in, if you add in, going back even one step further, you add in Rick's Concrete, which was the first sort of trade-specific annual services agreement we did using the bond waiver provision. Again, we were successful there as well. So what I would tell you is, if you, if you look at the places where we've done this, we have been, we have been successful. Construction offered a logical first place to start, because it was where we were performing the worst. And so it was, it was the place where we needed the immediate impact. It was, it was once that was done that we expanded into other areas. And so, we saw this in pharmaceutical, basically, in pharmacy services around, around human services. Second place where we went, again, there was a large contract, it still went to a large company, but we were able, but there was a local as-needed service that made sense to debunkel and break out. We did, awarded to a, to a minority-owned sole proprietor. And so, what I would tell you is, the key is, one, it's identifying the opportu, it's one, catching a contract at the renewal point, doing the education with the, with the department, and finding the opportunity to debunkel. We do still see areas where there are challenges. For example, we really struggle to find minority-owned professional services engineers. We just don't have an, we just don't have a large supply. That said, Laverre spends a lot of time, you know, looking, you know, sort of, I would, I hate to say bird-dogging, it's not really a great public, but it's the one, got a little cold, it's the one that comes to mind. But the idea is, but even there, it's important to note that when Laverre identifies a vendor, I think about, and also on the, on the architecture side, I think about Daryl's firm arrived. That, again, when we, when we identify a vendor, we're generally successful in getting a contract there, it's just, that's where the supply side becomes a problem, or it comes a challenge, it's when, it's when we haven't been there before.
You have a professional engineer, somebody might try to hire him, like the city of Virginia Beach.
You know what, so, but that's the problem. So, I mean, anytime we find, and it's a good problem to have, when we, when we identify an engineer, particularly an engineer with capacity and experience in any, in civil, you snap your fingers, and every large civil in the, in the area is recruiting that person to be part of their team, for generally large VDOT work, that's not necessarily in, in Virginia Beach, that we don't get to count, but we're in the space.
Rosemary, and then Sabrina?
Quick question. ERP, what does that stand for?
Enterprise Resource Protocol. Finance system.
I'm sorry, I should have, that, yes, it's financial system.
Real quick, one last question I have is, can you give me data on existing SWAM businesses who have been successful with getting contracts? How has their retention been? So they were successful in getting a contract with the city, and they continue to want to do business with the city in that space. How successful have they been in retaining that contract with the city?
Great question. We can get that kind of information. And as we said, the ERP is the Enterprise Resource Program.
Anybody else?
Protocol. With having something a lot less manual, it's going to be a lot easier to get that kind of information.
Alice, would you explain in two sentences, though, the significance of what the ERP system is?
Sure.
Its handles?
Every, it's all our financial system. It's our accounts payable, accounts receivable, fixed assets, our general ledger, our financial reporting. We have to integrate that with every financial system within the city, so the Banner Utility System, the City Treasurer System. And so it's our, it's the backbone of our financial. And so we had put in Oracle EBS in 1998, and there was unfortunately, a lot of custo, I'm sorry?
That's right.
Okay, a lot of customization, and so when you customize, and then they come up with updates, it's hard to get the updates. And so Rebecca, our purchasing agent, used it in a different city, she said, "Why can't we do this, and this, and this?" We customized it so much, we couldn't get it to work. So we're taking that same system, we're putting it in the cloud, which has a lot of other advantages, and we're really just recreating our chart of accounts, recreating our workflows, recreating how vendors bring us invoices, how we solicit purchasing. It's going to be transformational in the city, but it's taking a lot of effort. And so, as Councilwoman Rouse said, you want to do things the right way, and so we can concentrate on getting that done the right way. And then we have the disparity study recommendation, and we're trying to work on those, but, you know, it's, we think the ERP is going to provide so much more significant information to vendors, information for our statistical information, that type of thing. So we're really excited about this, but really working very hard to get it implemented properly.
Good. Aaron?
I guess is it safe to say the ERP will help with prompt payment?
Yes, absolutely.
Right, so that was one of the things we learned from disparity study as well.
Right, so the invoices, they're going to hopefully be come to us electronically, we'll be able to see it, oh, they're out there. And, you know, the, it's going to ping to a department, you got to approve this, and it's, if it doesn't go to that person, and in a day, it's going to ping to their supervisor, or however, however we create it up. And then finance is going to be able to see it, that it's out there to be paid.
And last, I just want to thank you all for what you do with the Virginia D Small Business Institute, met a lot of great people, and teaching them, and learning them, bringing them along, how to do business, so, within the city, it's pretty awesome and amazing. And our graduating class that we have will be showcasing them this year at the Expo on November 7th. So all the council members, the Minority Business Council Expo's November 7th, yeah, record.
They said I could use this pointer. So that's our institute, and that's a handsome gentleman sponsoring it.
Well, yeah, yeah. But they, all their businesses, one thing about their businesses, have to insert their logos in, we're going to have a backdrop stream, and that time, we'll be flashing their logos, everybody who graduated in that class. So that's, I think it's really amazing, and it's going to be awesome, as well as a number, record-setting year for a number of attendance and registered businesses we have, so, I'm pretty excited about it.
Okay, that's great.
My understanding that there were people who attended the institute who actually received contracts as well.
Yes.
So that's, that's wonderful to know as well. Was glad to see that.
Okay, if I close out by thanking you, but if I can make one comment, and Taylor, a number of years ago, we contracted with Hampton University to take a look at critical analysis. And, you know, basically, we found that some of the barriers to success that some businesses had in applying with the city, had to do with process and capacity to be able to do the work. But the fact is, we have taken proactive steps to, to get people up to speed. Can you summarize a couple of those processes?
I can, and first, and Mayor, thank you for that, I'd be remiss if we didn't mention the support that we got from your Process Improvement Steering Committee, specifically around some of those, around, around some of those processes. I would tell you, one of the things that continues to really drive participation for us is the improvements that were made to the Small Business Enhancement Plan in 2012, and then again, the rewrite that we initiated in 2015, and Dana, I think we finished it in 16. And really, what that, what that's done is that extended your Small Business Enhancement Plan language to be included in all of our public-private partnerships. The great thing, and then we also, in Dana's draft rewrite that you all approved, the update to the, that also went to the Process Improvement Steering Committee, of the, of your PPEA procedures, that you'll remember, took a 22-page document, condensed it to a six, I think, and then we added a series of appendices that could become templates, but, but also put your Small Business Enhancement Plan language in there. What that does is, when we're, when we're into public-private partnership, we're not working within the Procurement Act, so we have the ability to, to oftentimes put higher participation requirements, what in the past have been 10% aspirational, now 12%. We're able to say, "This is the number in the contract," and that we've been able to achieve much better participation there. Most notably, the first project that came out of that, that update, would have been your sports center that's under construction now, where I think we saw 14%, Laverre? 14%, the highest we've ever seen in construction. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And once again, thank you for a great report, but, you know, the Minority Business Council and our staff working with purchasing and finance, you know, just shows it's a collaboration and a blend, when people get together and collaborate with people with a focus and tension can do some incredibly great things, and keep on doing it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Mayor and members of council, our next briefing, I will introduce a few slides, and then turn it over to Donna Mickley from Human Resources. The presentation is the results of our 2019 Quality of Work-Life member survey. And I'm just going to go over a couple of things, a few minutes, and then turn it over to Donna. So this survey has been administered every other year for two decades to all of our employees. It contains 56 statements in six areas of work-life, values and ethics, leadership, communication, training, recognition, and the work environment. It uses what is known as a Likert scale, in which the employees are asked to respond either positively to a statement by saying that they either agree or strongly agree, or whether they're neutral, indicating that they neither agree nor disagree, or if they disapprove or look on the statement negatively, they disagree or strongly disagree. A typical statement might be, "I am treated with respect by my supervisor." There is a not applicable or NA option, if the employee simply doesn't know, or doesn't actually apply to the employee. From day one, Human Resources has taken great pains and steps to absolutely ensure the anonymity of the employee responses. It doesn't mean there are some people who might be suspicious and think that's not true, doesn't mean there are some people who might say things that are not correct. But I've been involved in this survey for the 20 years it's been going on, as a participant, as a department director administering it, and then as the deputy overseeing five... as a department director administering it, and then as the deputy overseeing five departments administering it, and I can assure you that the anonymity has been guaranteed from day one, with, with no exceptions. So, the Likert scale is a qualitative, subjective scale, you can't take averages on it, makes it very difficult to compare to previous years, or draw comparisons among departments, or comparisons among demographics such as perhaps gender, or race, or the length of tenure that somebody's been with the city. So, the survey firm takes those Likert scale responses and turns them into ordinal data, so that you can calculate arithmetic means, or what we will informally always refer to as averages. And it's very simple, strongly agree is ranked as a five, all the way down to strongly disagree is turned into a one, and then you can calculate up averages and come up with scores. So the Hillard Hines Independent Review Team looked at our survey, they concluded that it would be a, it's a good survey, they actually thought they were good questions, and they decided to administer that survey to our, to all of our employees just recently. It's essentially almost the, essentially the same survey that we put out, although they have added a few questions as to how employees view and feel about workplace safety and security. So what this does, it allows for a before-and-after impression of the May 31st event, but I do want to point out that both surveys are voluntary surveys, available to all employees, but it is employees who decide whether or not to take the survey. Nobody forces the employee to do it, we encourage them, we recommend it, but it's up to the employee to do that. It is not a random sample. So, when we, we don't know what, we'll show you today what the scores from February of 2019 was, were, but we can't really say what, whether there'll be any differences, we'll find that out later for the survey that Hillard Hines administered, which closed on October 13th. But the two surveys will have, may have different demographics, it could be different percentages based on the gender, based on the race, based on the length of time employees have been with the city, based on which departments tended to respond more or less to the survey, and the overall percentage of the workforce that's responding. In our case, as Donna will show you, we had 46% of our workforce responded to our survey. I don't know, we won't find out for some time, how many responded to the Hillard Hines survey. And then the, the big difference that might result in some changes between the two surveys is the May 31 event itself, the city's response to it, how close the employee was to that event, the media coverage, how much the employees have been exposed to social media, all of those can influence the employee's response. So the last thing I'm going to show you before turning this over to Donna, is that this table, to give you an idea of what the numerical conversion from the Likert scale means in terms of positive and negative responses. If you look at the neutral category, and this is the average of the six categories for all the employees that took the survey, you'll see that the neutral area occupies somewhere between 20 and 30% of the employee responses, and that forms a very weighted, kind of a weighted contribution to the average, that means that you, in order to get considerably above three, up to say four, you have to have a tremendous number of positive responses and a very small number of negative responses. For example, look at scores at the 3.9 and 4.0 range, only 5 to 3.5% of the responses were the negative responses, and the positive responses were in the 75% area. Even if you look at leadership, 3.6, and we would say that that's a score that needs to be improved, you still have only 12% of the respondents marking those statements as unfavorable, and they're outnumbered by the positive statements by about 4 to 1. So just keep that in mind as we show you, go through the scores, that in fact, any of those numbers from 3.6 to 4 generally means a solid majority of the respondents actually responded favorably, and a relatively small amount responded negatively. At that point, I'm going to turn it over to Donna, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the results.
Thank you, Tom. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and everyone else who's with us today. As Tom said, we had a good turnout for our response rate to our survey, and actually it differs a little bit from the completion rate, we had a 51% response rate, but we only count those surveys that are completed, which was 46%. And we had about 400 more employees who participated this year than we did in 2016. And as Tom explained, there are six categories, and at the end of every category is a place where you can provide comments, and our employees do, so you can see about a third of them provided comments in the survey. And we took it, we had it open for a month, and as you would imagine, when it comes to the comments, most of our respondents come from the larger departments because there's so many employees. So, if you take all 56 of those statements, and keep them, average them all together, for all those 3,400 employees, you come up with our citywide average score. And for the citywide average score and the statements, the research firm always does rounding, so, we come up with a 3.8, and three, in 2016, it was 3.79, and this time it was 3.84. So we did have positive movement, but we stayed at that 3.8 score. At the end of the survey, we do ask demographic questions, and some employees choose to complete that, some do not, but those that do, the reason why we ask it is we want to see who's participating, and we want to see if there are any groups of employees who score certain statements differently from other employees. And what we found over the past several years, as you can see, part-time employees, supervisors, those who are newer, and those who are age 55 and over, tend to rate the statements higher than any other group. All right, so we're going to start with values and ethics. The bar on the bottom is 2016, the one on the top is 2019, and I do want to say that the statements have been abbreviated, those aren't the full statements, and I'm not going to go through all 56 statements with you because I don't want to put you to sleep, but I'm going to kind of just point out the ones that increased and decreased, and then a couple others along the way. And one, the first one I'd like to point out is the one at the very top, and it says, I understand how my job impacts the city's mission and goals. See the score of 4.5? That is our highest-scoring statement in the survey, and it has been for several years, which means, to Tom's point, that 95% of the employees who participated rated that a four or a five when they scored it. When you see a smiley face, that means that it increased. So, I'm treated with respect by my immediate supervisor, that went from a 4.2 to a 4.3, and it ties as being our second-highest scoring statement in the survey. And if you go on down, you can see, the city does not tolerate discrimination, the city values diversity, there was no movement there, but very high scores at 4.0 and 3.9. And then rounding out that category, you'll see at the bottom, the other two that increased is managers in my department encourage effective teamwork, and training dedicated to inclusion and diversity is important, those went up, both went up from 3.7 to 3.8. The reason why the one statement at the top doesn't have a comparison is because that's the one and only statement that we changed, and we changed it so much, we couldn't compare it to last year. As you can see in this category, none of them, the highest score, the lowest score in the category is 3.8, so none of them are below that citywide score of 3.8. And that's what we pretty much use as our baseline, we say anything that's 3.8 and above, we're doing really well, and then we tend to put our focus more on the statements that are 3.7 and under. So for the communication category, remember I said there were only three statements in the survey that decreased, it was here in this category, and it's interesting because the one at the top, I keep myself informed, I mean, the score is still really high, it went from a 4.2 to a 4.1, but when we tend, when, as employees, when we tend to talk about ourselves, the statements that start with I, we tend to rate them the highest, and we tend to rate our supervisors, our immediate supervisors, high, but the further up we go in the hierarchy, to managers and directors and so on, we tend to get a little bit more critical, and you'll see that as we go throughout the survey. The other two that decreased in this category was the Member Communications Program, keeps me well-informed, went to a 3.9, as did the, the department does a good job communicating city issues. But we also had two increases in this category, and they both had to do with people doing what they say they will, and this is a perfect example of what I just said. You can see, the immediate supervisor doing what they say they will is 4.1, where the one at the bottom, managers doing what they see that they will, is 3.6. So, both increased, but there's a difference there. Training and development, we had four increases, both of them, as you see at the top, has to do with immediate supervisor, providing time to get training, and under, tries to understand problems and find solutions. Also, about receiving proper training, that went up to a 4.0, as did amount of work expected of me is reasonable, so there's only two there that's below that citywide average. Work environment, this is on two slides, again, because there's so many statements in this category, but if you'll note, the one at the top, the department accommodates my needs when I have a personal matter to attend to, that one is the one that was tied, being the second-highest at 4.3. And then, one of the ones that increased is the supervisor works with me to help solve work-related issues. And then rounding out that category, it was really nice to see, if you look at the top, I would recommend the city is a good place to work, that went from 3.7 to 3.8, so now it's tied with the citywide average score. And I'm in a work environment where I feel included and valued, that went from 3.6 to 3.7. The leadership category, there were absolutely no changes, it stayed exactly the same, and our employees know that's about middle managers, directors, our DCMs, and the city manager, so no changes there. Recognition, I love all the smiley faces on this one, we had a lot of increases, probably for the last 10 years, we have worked really hard to create a culture of recognition at the city, and you know, it takes a lot of years to, to make changes in a culture, regardless of what it is you're trying to change. So, some really high scores here, again, if you look, the first three have to do about the immediate supervisor, that they value talents and contributions, went to a 4.1, they provide a useful, ongoing feedback, went to a 4.0, and they compliment or praise me, went to a 4.0 as well. The other two increases that we saw, I'm satisfied with the advancement opportunities that I have, went to a 3.2, and then, overall, I'm satisfied with the city's compensation, which in parentheses, has salary, healthcare, retirement, leave, et cetera. It went from a 2.8 to a 2.9. That is the lowest-scoring statement on the survey, it has been for several years, but that 2.9 score is the highest it's been since 2006, when it was 3.4. So if you think about it, our highest score is 4.5, and our lowest score is 2.9. So I think our employees really take their time and read through the statements and tell us exactly how they feel when you have that kind of variance in these scores. This just gives you a little different way of looking at it, real quickly, of what was our, where do we excel, our highest scores, and again, you'll see it pops out where there's stuff about the immediate supervisor, but there's, there's two statements on there about treating, being treated with respect, encouraging teamwork, considering ideas, those types of things, and then the bottom eight is more around wanting more a culture of learning and development, holding coworkers accountable, being satisfied with advancement opportunities, the few things we just talked about. So, all in all, out of those 56 statements, only 18 are at that 3.7 and below, which I mentioned earlier is where we tend to put our, our emphasis. So now we're going to look at some ethnicity scores, and I want to say that when we get these ethnicity scores, it's only for the city as a whole, not by department, okay? And the reason why we wanted to share these with you today is because Hillard Hines publicly said that they heard from some African-Americans in the listening sessions that they had three concerns, and those three concerns is that they said they felt like they were treated differently, that they were more subject to discipline than their counterparts, and they were less likely to be promoted than their counterparts. So I went in and I found statements that I thought correlated to those concerns, and wanted to share some of those scores with you today. That's not to take away from anything that was shared in those listening sessions, it's just we put a lot of time and energy into this member survey, and our employees give us their time to participate in the member survey, so we want to make sure they have a voice as well, and we wouldn't, we wanted to be, you to be able to have something to compare to. So, when you look at these columns over the next three slides, what you'll see in the first column is all the combined scores from all of our white employees at the city, and then you'll see the scores for black African-Americans, and then you'll see the scores for non-white, and then the non-white column, that includes black and African-Americans, because we use the EEO categories, and there's several of them, so it would be a lot for me to try to put them all on this chart. So, that's what you'll see as, as we go through. So just even looking at the categories themselves, if you see red, you'll see that African-Americans actually scored a little higher than did white employees for the categories. But let's break it down a little bit more by the individual statements. So the first three, again, I wanted to tie these back to what was heard in the, in the listening sessions. The first three have to do with respect. I'm treated with respect by my coworkers, I'm treated with respect by my immediate supervisor, and I'm treated with respect by the managers in my department. Look how high those scores are. And, none of them are below that 3.8 citywide average. The immediate supervisor provides me time to obtain training. If you see a, numbers in bold, that means that the African-American scores or the non-white scores were lower than white. So that's the case in, in this one, but still very high scores, 4.2, 4.1, 4.1. And then the next two have to do with, the way that it reads is when problems occur, supervisor tries to understand what happened, then find solutions rather than trying to place blame. So you can see, the scores are very close, and then, and the one with managers, African-Americans actually scored it a little bit higher. The next two statements at the top, I don't know if they directly correlate to the, what was brought up in the listening sessions, but I thought it would be remiss if I didn't include them. So let me tell you exactly the full length of the very first one, and it applies to the second one as well. It reads, the city does not tolerate discrimination based on age, gender, race, religion, disability, sexual orientation, et cetera, and treats this issue with great importance. So you can see the scores there, there is a difference, 4.1, 3.9, and 3.8, but all of them are at that citywide average score or higher. Same as for the city values diversity, they're all higher than the citywide average score. The supervisor values my talents and contributions, very high, I'm satisfied with advancement opportunities, they're 3.2, 3.3, 3.2. This was probably the biggest difference that I saw in the ones that we pulled out that correlated. Overall, I'm satisfied with the city's compensation. You can see African-Americans scored that 3.2, white 2.8, and then non-white 3.0. And supervisor works with me to help solve work-related issues, very high scores there. And then finishing up with the ethnicity scores, my managers and supervisors apply policies and rules fairly to me, you can see both at 3.9 and 3.8. I'm proud to be a member of my department, look how high those scores are. I'm in a work environment where I feel included and valued, African-Americans scored that a little lower, as did non-white than white. And the, the last statement, I kind of feel, to me, kind of sums up, is a good representation of our survey, because if you love what you do, and you believe in this organization, and you would recommend it to somebody else to say, hey, you need to come and work here, I think it speaks volumes, and as you can see, the scores there, white 3.8, African-Americans 4.0, and non-white 3.8. Okay, I don't expect you to be able to read what's on this slide, it's more visual, because I just want you to know that we have an action plan, and we have, ever since the survey started, and after every survey, we go in and we review it, and revise it, and update it based on the, the scores and on the comment themes that we get. So we just recently did that, there are 37 actions in the plan, and one time, in between surveys, we go to the departments and we ask them to tell us, what have you done in your department to implement this action? And, you know, because larger departments, how they implement an action may be different from maybe a smaller department, just based on the size and based on the type of work that they do. So, they report back, what did they do, how did they implement the action, we compile all that, we send it out to all the employees, and we post it on BeachNet so that everybody can see what we've done in response to the survey. The other thing that we do is, we've had this poster for quite a while, we call it a Work Life Simply Said. As you can see on the left, at the heart of it is be accountable, hold others accountable. As you can see on the left, at the heart of it is be accountable, hold others accountable. And we update it the same way that we do the action plan. It's based on the results that we get and on those comment themes. So the things that we changed this year, it was totally redesigned, but we put more emphasis on communicate effectively and often over in the corner, even in person. We put more emphasis on building trust, which is at the top. We added explain why, because employees are really wanting to know when decisions are made, what's the why behind it, especially when it impacts their jobs. And we also added be present, see and be seen. So we ask employees to print this poster out and to display it in their work area, their work environment, because it's a constant reminder to all of us. As you can see at the top, it says it's what we expect from each other. So it reminds us that these are the things that we're looking for from one another to help make this the best quality of work life that we can, because it's up to all of us in order to make it that way. And with that, I will take any questions.
Mr. Wood?
Thanks. In the draft that we got in our package, it was slightly different. It had this page that is not on there, which is average.
Okay, that must have been one of the, I had some slides in the back, just in case you had questions.
Because.
Is it the department scores?
Yeah, because the diversity ones weren't in the package. But so.
Okay.
It says easy questions. Okay.
Pardon?
It says easy questions?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I'm curious, just as I take a look at these, the department averages, you've got, if you take a look at agriculture and budget, for example, that are 4.5 at the top end, and then you've got ECCS and police that are down at the bottom end of this. And it looks like it hasn't changed dramatically for the high-end or the low-end ones over this three-year period. And I'm wondering, do you go out further to say, okay, why is ECCS and police continuously having these lower scores? And why is agriculture and budget continuously going up?
Generally, we leave that up to directors to talk about that amongst their division managers, and also with the deputy city managers, to have discussions about what, how are we implementing our actions, and is it making a difference? And do we need to do something differently? So.
So, okay, then, so following up on that, then, if you took a look at these two top and two bottom ones, for example, and I guess you're able to dig into them, and even though with the anonymity of the survey, you're still able to dig in and say, okay, it's a leadership issue, it's going to take whatever in this department that's higher or lower than the others. So is that done? And that's probably a Tom question, but.
Every department gets their scores for their department for every single statement. So they'll know this was all citywide, but they'll get the same information, but they'll know how all of their employees rated every single statement as well.
And I know you've been manager since this was already done, so. But I imagine in the past, the manager would go through this, or the deputies would, or?
Yes, sir, they do. Of course, when you look at the top two, which is management services and Department of Agriculture, those are very small departments. They work in a, essentially, an office-type environment. Their director is with them, sometimes shoulder to shoulder. And then you look at the other larger departments where they have a lot of different functions. They'll have, in some cases, say, Public Utilities, which has the call center, which is an area that involves a lot of entry-level positions, also positions that are paid relatively low. And so there's going to be, just some departments, depending on what the makeup of their jobs and their workforce is, you're not, you're going to be comparing apples and oranges to try to compare, say, management services to Public Works, or management services to Fire. So we, it's hard to draw conclusions there. Most, each department takes their results and then starts breaking down their results and trying to figure out what it is in their departments that needs to be improved.
So is this one of the, if I can, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So is this one of the surveys that allows comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And so when you look at the comments, does that give you any kind of insight into this?
It does, it does. Most, a lot, and of course, the comments aren't all negative, but usually the people that leave the comments are venting just a little bit. And so you can take a look at the comments and try to get some idea of where areas need to be improved.
Yeah, that's what we're always hoping from the comments, that it gives some insight into why the scores are the way they are. And the directors are asked to look at those and come up with themes in their own department, because what, a theme in their department may not be a theme that we have citywide. So they're supposed to help, you know, in making changes.
So then how is this tracked? Does this track by the deputy city managers and?
Yes, the deputy city managers, when they evaluate the department directors, they'll have the scores for that and the comments for that department there, and they'll review them and discuss them with them and try to look. Some of the comments will be common themes, such as the concept that rules and regulations aren't applied fairly. Sometimes that can be from someone who's been disciplined. We don't know, but it can theoretically be someone who's been disciplined and doesn't agree with that, or it could be someone who considers themselves a top performer, but feels that, say, the merit increases and the cost-of-living increases are given to everybody pretty much equally, and that there isn't a distinction between someone who considers themselves outperforming others, and yet they both are on the same pay scale. So some of that is a common theme. And then, of course, issues in general about compensation. A lot of shots at the top management.
Jessica.
Are we planning on doing another one this year to try to see a before and after just for ourselves? I realize that the independent investigation is doing one, but are we planning on doing one as well?
Well, our normal one wouldn't have been until 2020, every two years. This was a little late. I forget what it was that pushed it off, but it was supposed to have been December of 2018. We didn't, weren't able to execute it till February of 2019. So the next one would be the fall of 2018, unless we were to do another one, excuse me, the fall of 2020. We will have the Hilliard Heinz investigation. And if there are differences, the first thing we'll look at is, we'll go in and look at what was the spread of demographics? Were different departments more represented than before? Different demographics, different tenures of the city? In my personal experience in going over Public Utilities and looking at the last three surveys, there's been a dramatic difference in the number of employees who are here 15 years and longer, and the number of employees that are here five years and less. I mean, stark, one is going down and one is coming up. The number, because of, essentially because of retirements. And so over a three-survey period, you had a dramatic change in who was actually filling out the survey in terms of their tenure with the city. And as you know, with our Plan One, Plan Two, and hybrid plans, that falls into that type of thing. A lot of people who are retiring out of here are retiring out of here on Plan One. And a lot of people in the first five years are in the hybrid plan. Those plans were greatly different in their extent to which they would be viewed favorably by, in the compensation package.
And just to refresh Tom's memory, we actually moved it because we had always held it in October since we'd started. And leadership thought, maybe we need to get it away from open enrollment and not have them competing against one another. So that's why we moved it to February of 2019.
Did you see a change when we did that in terms of participation?
Well, we had almost 400 additional participate this time in 2016. So that could have, I think that probably played into it.
When you talk about the demographics, was there a breakout by gender?
Yes. Male, female?
I mean, maybe that can be provided to us, but how did the men versus women type?
I thought, on your slide, may have showed it, I thought it was 50% were men and 49% women, and 1% did not respond, at least that.
You mean like the scores?
How did their scores change?
Oh, and scores, we can get that, I think.
Yeah, I can give it to you there. I asked the research firm just to give me, to let me know if they see, you know, major differences, or if there are any concerns. So they try to pull some of those out, but I can definitely get them for the city as a whole. But as an example, like the females keep themselves informed more than males, 4.2 versus 3.9. So they try to look at those types of things to see.
3.9 women, 4.2?
4.2 women, 3.9 males. And, trying to see if I have another one, but yeah, we can provide that.
I'd be interested in, just in comments I've heard. I'd be interested to see if there's any kind of difference there. When you got, you talked about the, that there were availability for comment, free comment in the survey. Did we create any kind of a word bubble to get kind of an idea of what specifically they were, people were concerned about?
Actually, the leadership has always made it my responsibility to read all the comments and come up with themes. So that's what I was explaining when that poster that we do. The two major themes that I saw, besides things having to do with compensation, was around communication and trust. And they almost seemed like they were interrelated, that they want to, they hear a lot from, employees say they hear a lot from their immediate supervisor, but they want to hear more from the middle managers and directors, and have conversations with them, and be involved with them. Because I think sometimes that doesn't happen enough for some of them to really even be able to know how to answer some of these questions. And so, you know, the more you talk and have conversations with one another, the more you're going to build trust. So that's how, what was added to that poster based on those themes, so.
But there was not a word bubble that strictly is pulling out the key words?
No, no, ma'am.
I think it would be interesting to see that. I think, I think that would maybe give us a better idea of what people's concerns are. I think at least for this body, potentially. And then, Tom, when we first started the discussion of where employees were at in terms of how they were feeling after May 31st, we had discussed a security survey. Where are we at in implementing something like that, where we are specifically asking for feedback about safety in the buildings?
Well, okay, so the Hilliard Heinz survey asks, I think, four questions on that issue. We have a Department of Homeland Security assessment underway also to take a look at the security. And the Hilliard Heinz investigation is also supposed to be giving us some feedback on that.
Then the only other question I had about how the survey's administered, we're administering that ourselves. We're not using a vendor to, as like a third party who does it on our behalf.
No, we use a third party.
We use a third party.
Yes, we have since the very beginning. They handle everything. They send the emails, and they put a unique link in each email to the employees. And the only thing we do is, for employees who don't have email, we print paper copies, and we print them on a special colored paper so that we know it's for, you know, you can't make Xerox copies. And I work with each of the departments, and they ensure that those copies get to employees without email. We provide a prepaid, self-addressed envelope. So all the employees has to do is fold up the paper copy, put it in the envelope, and mail it.
And when we receive one that's been photocopied, we discount that. Because we assume that perhaps someone's trying to stuff the box. So we have, it has to be the original survey in the prepaid, pre-printed envelope so that we know that we got back one survey from one individual.
I think the, I think the theme everybody is talking about right now is how do we build trust with everybody? Is it well-communicated to people participating in the study that this is a third-party vendor, and that the city does not have real control over where the, you know, how the responses are being received?
I feel like we do. I mean, it's out there a lot. And then when the emails come, they come from the research firm that says that, you know, the city has hired us to do this survey. So I feel like it is there. I think what, if what you're hearing, I think sometimes those demographic questions at the end of the survey scare off some of the employees, because I think they're fearful that if they answer them, that somehow we're going to be able to identify them. And we've told, you know, we've communicated so many times that there is absolutely no way to link any scores or any comments back to an individual employee. But I do think that's where some of the apprehension is in participating.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Just to follow up on Jessica's question there, because I've looked at some of the comments for one of the lower-ranked departments earlier this year. And it's interesting because they, somebody may refer to a particular department head or supervisor, or deputy department head, and they kind of X that out. So it'll say, and it doesn't make sense when you read the comment, because it's like, well, what are they talking about? And then you kind of have to figure out that they're talking about that. So they do a really good job of kind of doing it. But again, I think if you look at some of these small departments, it's pretty easy to figure out who's saying what. But I think in the larger ones, it's a little bit more difficult.
Yeah, we definitely asked the research firm to remove all titles. I mean, I'm not saying that they don't miss some, but, or even identifiable information. Because some employees like to say, you know, I've been with the city for 15 years, and I've been in this position, and blah, blah, blah. So we try to remove, you know, they redact that before they give it to the city, because so that way, we don't have it. And the other thing is, and I always caution the directors about this, to your point, you know, if I'm the type of person that's very outspoken, and I go around saying the same thing all the time, and people hear me say it, and then when the survey comes around, if that comment shows up on the survey, they may think, they may assume that I said it, but maybe I didn't. Maybe I feel like I've already said my piece, but somebody else who's more quiet and reserved feels like the survey is the perfect time for them to, you know, put a comment there. And so it's kind of human nature sometimes to want to try and figure out who you think said something, but they would just be guessing, because there would be no way to link the comments or the scores back to the employees.
Aaron?
I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
How many, how many city employees do we have? What, seven?
About almost 7,500.
7,400. And so this completed surveys, how many, is this saying 3,441 people completed the survey?
Yes, sir.
Or is it saying only 46% were, like, the surveys were half completed, or something?
That's 3,441 is how many completed it, which represents a 46% completion rate.
Okay, of half the employees, not half the surveys were completed. If someone didn't finish through the whole survey, just stopped.
That was, our response rate was 51%, but we don't count the surveys that aren't fully completed.
Okay.
So 3,441 actually completed it, which represents 46% of our workforce took the survey.
Okay, all right. And then I guess, once you take it, there's no way to take it again?
No, sir. There is a unique link in each survey that is unique to each individual employee. And they, the research firm even says, don't forward that email to somebody else, because then somebody else would be taking it for you. So, no, it's unique to you. So, and only the research firm knows that, because once you click on that link, you're taken to their site that they're using to compile the data. Nobody at the city has access to that data. It's all on their system. So we've taken every measure that we can to ensure confidentiality.
Anybody else? Sabrina?
Really, I do appreciate what we know and the information that we have on the survey, the completed surveys that we have, the 46%. I guess what troubles me is the unknown. And I think that's with any survey, or anything that you do, is the unknown. It's that 54%. What do they feel? What's their experience? I want to know what that is. And what I'm hearing is, from quite a few people, and I do believe what Hilliard Heinz, the things that they are receiving, I believe those things that they're receiving are very real to people who work in the city of Virginia Beach. And I say that because I hear from them often. And they are afraid, I want to understand, to discuss how they feel to fill out a survey. I'm not sure if it's the trust, well, it's probably partly because of trust issue, and partly because I understand there's just apprehension. They just don't want to lose their job. They don't want things to be traced back to them. And I'm hearing that a lot. And, you know, recently, I had someone call me and say, listen, we're having this issue concerning a person being passed over for a promotion. And I hear that quite often from minorities. But then I also hear some things too from Caucasian staff members as well. I mean, I've talked to some people who've been in tears saying to me, black and white, saying, you know, there is, there are issues in our environment. They need to be addressed. We don't want this glossed over. We're not, we're afraid to speak up, but there are clearly some issues. And I guess it's just, this is just my comment to, you know, staff, to Mr. And I guess it's just, this is just my comment to, you know, staff, to Mr. Leahy and all those involved, is that there are some concerns within the city, within our staff members, and they're surfacing. And if you ask me what keeps me up at night, those things keep me up at night. And I really want to know how to address that. I don't have the answer, but I know that it is very real for several people, several staff members who work here. And I'd like to get to the essence of whatever the fear is, whatever the issues are that they have, because it's very important and it affects them on a daily basis.
I mean, as the person that's been responsible for this survey since 2002, I, you know, I wish every single employee participated. I mean, we provide it, we say it's here, it's there for a month, please participate. So to your point, you know, I'm not sure. It's their opportunity every two years to have a voice. And we do listen to that voice. So, you know, I do know that the city manager has quarterly meetings with employees called member conversations. He also has what's called the member advisory committee that he meets with two or three times a year. That committee is constant, the same employees are on it for a couple of years. And in all those meetings, you're talking about seven or eight meetings a year, he always has opened it up and employees have the opportunity to come and say, this is what I have a question about. And we have conversations about things that are going on in the city. And if they're not comfortable asking a question out loud, we provide them cards. They can write a question on a card and he answers the question. So we do have other means for employees to provide input as well. We try to do that. I mean, the member communications program isn't just about putting information out. We're trying to get as much information back from employees as we can. So I hear you. I don't know if maybe there's focus groups we could do. I don't know if they would come to focus groups. I'm not sure. But I do know, I can say personally, I've tried everything I can to encourage employees. I've gone to department meetings. I've said, come to my office and see what I get from the research firm. And you can see how the scores and comments, you cannot tie it back to anybody. You should feel safe, you know, expressing yourself in the survey, but.
Yeah, as I mentioned, I don't have the answer and I don't think any of us have it right now.
Yeah.
It's just something that we just really need to keep our eye on.
Yes, ma'am.
And understand that it is present within our city, within our staff members.
Thank you.
Jessica?
More of a comment and maybe a suggestion to us that perhaps we should consider doing a survey in February, even though we would normally not. I think it's probably pretty important that we keep, try to keep as much of our finger on the pulse with this as possible, especially moving forward with all of the new changes that we're going to be facing just in the coming year or two. I wonder also if it might be beneficial for us to maybe implement random department surveys through the same firm, maybe look at maybe different times we can get better response. Maybe we need to do some kind of like outreach to the employees to really build that confidence that what they're submitting is truly anonymous. I know just about every major company does these types of surveys. And I know when my, I get the email with, for my company, I'm always like, well, I'm sure they're recording this or I'm sure they know they've got some kind of ticker and, you know, you don't, you know, private company really don't know. But I do think it's important that we at least make the effort. And I do think that going forward, it's very important that we do anything we can to really start building a solid foundation with, you know, not only the public, but the people we employ to build their confidence that we're really committed to hearing what they have to say, the good and the bad.
You know, Jessica, you know, I agree with your sentiment, but I think, once again, we've got to understand that we're in a time of transition right now. You know, we're going to be in the process of hiring, you know, a city manager and some of the dynamics are going to be, you know, changing in terms of perception and everything. What I recommend, I think we got to, you know, keep our fingers on it, but, you know, running another survey so close, you know, when our, you know, senior leadership is going to be in a time of transition, you know, I just think there might be a little bit more gap time and also give things and events an opportunity to settle down. Michael?
Donna, it's nice to see you. I receive many emails from you and it's nice to put a face to those emails. So thank you for your presentation today and thank you for the information you shared with us. And I too am thankful for the information that we know about those men and women who work for the city of Virginia Beach. And yet we know the majority of, what I think you referred to as members or those men and women who work for the city, in fact, did not participate in the response. And I think that leads to some of the questions about trust and some of the other questions that Councilmember Wooton brought to this discussion. And I wonder if there's another way to approach the discussion of those staff members who have grievances with their status as an employee. I know in the federal government, for example, there are what's known as whistleblower protections. And I guess this question is maybe perhaps more directed to the city manager or maybe it's one that we could have at a later date. But I wonder if the city should consider, or maybe there are, so I guess that would be my first question, but what protections exist or what procedures exist for men and women who work for the city who would like to express a grievance or who would like to express their displeasure with their, the status of their employment? Are there, is there a process in place that goes somewhat beyond the normal human resources department that protects that individual that also can express their concerns? And I'll give you an example. And in the private sector, for example, I work for a nonprofit, but many people are uneasy about going to their human resources department for a variety of reasons that we don't have, I don't have time to discuss or bring to the table here. But I guess my point is, in addition to the survey, which is useful and important, is it worthwhile to consider a best practice for how individual members could bring individual situations to the table in a way that they can have confidence in?
Well, to your point, we do have obviously employee relations and human resources that deals with grievances all the time. In addition to that, if it kind of goes beyond, it depends, it depends upon what the grievance is because we do have the integrity connection program, which is run by the city auditor's office. So they have a...
Similar to a whistleblower protection?
Yes, yes, it is. And they get lots of calls. The hotline is anonymous and I actually work with the city auditor's office on their, that program and marketing it and the logo, redesign the logo for it and it's on Beachnet and the presence for it.
Do you feel like the city staff is well aware of the presence of that program?
I think they would say yes, based on the amount of calls and reports that they get to investigate. And if they see that it is something that should go to human resources employee relations, they'll send it that way. But I think they would answer yes. I don't want to speak for them, but.
I don't mean to disparage in any way the field, but I think that there are many people who are, who work, have some trepidation approaching human resources with grievances, workplace grievances.
I understand.
Okay, anybody? Rosemary?
I know we all get surveys all the time and it's like, I don't want to be bothered with this. So there may be a certain number of people who just don't really want to take the time to do it. I know there's a lot of surveys I don't do. Have you tried anything with offering this incentive-type thing to randomly choose someone that's participated? I don't know, give them a day off or, you know, some kind of prize for participating? Like in a sweepstakes?
So to date, we haven't attempted to make a random survey. We could do that. The cost will go up. The way we do the survey right now, which is open to everybody and gets nearly 50% participation, which is a very, very high participation rate for a voluntary survey. But we could randomize a survey and things like what you suggest would help maybe to get people to not just hang up the phone when somebody gets with them. These will take time and cost money, especially if we were to burrow down to department by department. If you did the entire city and you just need to take, say, 3% or 4% of the city to get a random sample, that's one thing. But if you now have to get into 17 departments or even if we just looked at ones that have the lower scores and cut that in half, you're still going to talk about a cost. It's not that we'll do it, if that's the will of council, we will do that. Just it won't come without a price tag.
Okay, Guy?
Speaking of another survey, I don't want to jump the gun on our city manager's search, but certainly one of the concepts that I've thought about is having a survey of employees and the public in terms of trying to define the objectives of our search and the qualities of the city manager. So I understand your comments, Mr. Mayor, about another survey on top of the survey, but it certainly is a possibility in my mind that we ought to explore if we're going to do another survey soon. That would be one I'd be interested in.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Well, the thing, I think one thing we do have to understand that, you know, kind of having a background with organizations, we are a very large organization. In any large organization, small organization, there's always going to be, you know, pockets of dissatisfaction that go. And this goes, you know, in any workplace, church groups, bowling leagues, military and everything. You know, I think overall, you know, our numbers are good, but I think, once again, we also got to strive to get more people out. And if I remember from my statistics, they say anything over 20% on a survey like this is considered significant? Is that about right?
Yes, sir.
But once again, any healthy organization is always willing to look at itself critically, listen to people and, you know, to move forward. And, you know, I think, you know, going forward, we're going to be on the right track. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Mayor, Members of Council, the next one, next briefing will be from Carolyn Smith. She's going to give us a glimpse of the pending planning items. Carolyn?
Good afternoon. We have just four planning items scheduled for you in November, two on the 12th and then two on the 19th. All are recommended for approval by both the staff and then by the Planning Commission. Both items on the 12th are in the Beach District. And the first item is a request of the city of Virginia Beach for a major entertainment venue sign package for both the Sports Center and also the Convention Center. So large venues such as these often warrant larger signs than a typical business might. So for this reason, major entertainment venue signs have their own set of regulations and they are required to be approved by the city of Virginia Beach. The Sports Center and the Convention Center have submitted a joint package for your consideration that includes upgrades to two existing signs associated with the Convention Center and then up to seven new signs for the Sports Center that is under construction. The electronic display and wayfinding sign package will create a seamless arrival and departure experience by providing clear information in a simple format. And staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Item two is an application for conditional use for fuel sales in conjunction with a convenience store that is proposed along General Booth Boulevard. A 3.2 acre portion of a larger nine acre parcel that is Zone B2 Community Business District is proposed to be developed with a 6,000 square foot Wawa convenience store with up to 16 fuel pumps. As part of the applicant's outreach, they had discussions with the leadership of the Bird Neck Lakes, the Park Place and the Red Wing Neighborhoods. And I have received copies of a summary of that correspondence if anyone would like to see that. The applicant is also holding a public meeting on October 30th, so this is a plug for that. It's at 6:30 on the 30th at the Princess Anne Rex Center. Vehicular access to the site will be via a new shared right in and right out along General Booth Boulevard. And a new access point is proposed along Prosperity Road. Right-of-way improvements include a new right turn lane and a new left turn lane into the site, a reconfiguration of the intersection at Prosperity Road and General Booth Boulevard, a sidewalk along Prosperity Road and then also a 10-foot wide shared use path along General Boulevard. The property is located in the Southern Rivers watershed and as recommended by our comprehensive plan, they have submitted a preliminary stormwater management strategy. And staff is confident that the preliminary design does have the ability to comply with our stormwater regulations. We have received 11 emails of opposition. All of those emails, without exception, have focused on the existing traffic congestion in this vicinity and the fear that this use would exacerbate that. There were no speakers at the Planning Commission public hearing and they did vote 10 to 0 to recommend approval to the city council.
Ms. Emily?
I'm having trouble making sure I know which site this is.
Do you mind going back?
It's across from...
Dunkin' Donuts.
...on one side and Prosperity Road on the other.
So here's that very successful Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes, okay.
The commissary is up here. Does that help you? So you've got Oceana on that side of General Booth Boulevard and then Prosperity Road. This is Prosperity Road. It takes you back to Red Wing Golf Course. Here's Oceana Boulevard that takes you up to Oceana Naval Air Station.
It seems to me that in one of our CIP, what's coming several months ago, it was mentioned that we had asked for some additional funding from the state or somebody to fix that intersection, particularly that area that...
Yes.
From the other side, Oceanabool or Dam Neck, because that is a horrible intersection.
Yes, ma'am.
Just really, really bad.
And that's why I have our traffic engineer expert here because I was anticipating that question. And so Rick's got some really good information about that.
We developed a project for that intersection and we applied for funding with the state through the SmartScale project portal. And we received $3.6 million from VDOT for that project. So it's a $4.1 million project total. We'll receive funding in 2024 for that and we expect construction to be complete by early 2027. So, but that is, that is a fix for that intersection. But, but there are, there are some voluntary modifications or voluntary improvements that the Wawa has, have included in their application to kind of mitigate some of the impacts of a Wawa on that intersection. So it won't totally mitigate the impacts of the traffic. I mean, obviously anytime you add a facility as big as a Wawa, it will increase the delays at the intersection, but they are providing voluntary improvements that will help mitigate the impacts. But that project, the big project, the $4.1 million project, won't come online until early 2027.
Is there a high tension wire running along there?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a question.
Is there a high tension wire there? Power line?
Would you mind going to this site for me? So this area right here is reserved for those high tension wires. Right along General Booth Boulevard. Okay. Two planning items are scheduled for you on the 19th. One is in the Beach District and then the second one is in the Princess Anne District. Item one is a request for a street closure for the southern portion of the alley that is adjacent to the applicant's residence at 31745th Street in the north end. Currently, improvements exist in the alley. There's a shed that's indicated in purple and then a retaining wall that's outlined in green. The viewers met and they recommend the removal of these improvements as a public utilities easement is deemed necessary as there is a public sewer line within the alley. So it could be difficult for... So, it could be difficult for city crews to access that sewer line if improvements remain in that area. The applicant does agree to remove the structures in the northern half of the alley, but they are requesting that the improvements be allowed to remain in the hatched area, which is the area that they are proposing to close. The applicant agrees that if and when city crews do need access to that sewer line, that they would remove those structures. So, based on this, the Planning Commission is recommending to you a modified condition number two that would allow those improvements to remain in that closed area, but only if the city council approves an encroachment. So, that encroachment request has been submitted. It's a separate process, so staff has that under review, and it will be scheduled for city council's consideration following your action on the street closure. Opposition to the street closure does exist from the property owners to the north. They are frustrated that the unauthorized improvements still exist in that alley, and they believe that their privacy is somewhat diminished as a result of those structures. The Planning Commission did vote 9 to 0 to recommend approval. There were no speakers at the Planning Commission hearing, and that approval is contingent with that modified condition that I mentioned. And then the final item on the 19th is a request for a conditional use permit for mini warehouse that would be proposed along Fisher Arch, which is near the intersection of Sandbridge Road and Princess Anne Road. The property is Zoned B2 Community Business District, so a conditional use permit for a mini warehouse is required. A small office building is also proposed, but that is allowed by right under the terms of the B2 district. The site's located in the Southern Rivers Watershed, so the applicant did submit a preliminary stormwater management strategy, and staff is confident that the strategy has the ability to address our stormwater requirements. The property is located in the transition area, so the transition area ITA Citizen Advisory Committee has been briefed on the proposal. And in keeping with the transition area design guidelines, a rural vernacular-style architecture design is proposed. So, the building really looks more like a barn and far less than a typical mini warehouse building might. There's ample parking provided for both uses, and the plant material that's indicated on the condition plan is far and above the minimum requirements. There were two speakers in opposition. They questioned whether this use is really appropriate in the transition area, and much of the discussion really focused on stormwater management. There were nine planning commissioners in attendance, two actually abstained, so they recommended approval to you with a vote of 6 to 1. And that is it for November.
Ms. Emily?
Yeah, I was really concerned about only seven councilmen and planning commissioners voting on this, because it has been...
It's been around for a good while, and the transition area committee has struggled with it because of the size of it not being really what had been anticipated in the transition area. But at any rate, at the last presentation that the transition area committee had, which was a couple of weeks ago, the engineer indicated that it's got a rather unique drainage facility. What is it, a dry pond? And they're going to plant trees in it to capture the evapotranspiration. I was impressed that they knew the word. But I believe this now is being delayed until December. I think that's what you gave me yesterday, Bill.
We have it scheduled for November 19th.
On the list for December, we better never check that.
I'll correct that.
Yes, ma'am.
I would really like for Dr. McLaughlin to see that. He's our chief expert in Virginia Tech, and that paper is very ready to come out as soon as our folks finish reviewing it. But that's an interesting concept. I'm not sure it's where it is in other places. It's interesting to see. I'd really like to see more about that before it comes out.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, members of city council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21 and by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I call for a special session in the Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, October 22, 2019, City Manager's Conference Room, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. Following the workshop, which begins at 2 o'clock on Tuesday, October 22, 2019, there will be a special session to convene into closed session for the sole purposes of the proposed dome site. The chair will now entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Public held property. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section Dome site. Public contract. Discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, the discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where the discussion in an open session would adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237829. Dome site. Do I have a motion?
Send it.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Ms. Emily?
Aye.
Mr. Moss is absent. Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Rouse?
Aye.
Mr. Verlucy?
Aye.
Mr. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Wooton?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Moore Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Dyer?
Aye.
Aye. We will adjourn, and let's take a very short break.